Pictures, she cracks me up. This is a sheriff hat. There's a badge on it.
I'm selective here.
I left them money for Steve. We're early.
I'm gonna go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order a minute early. First off, I'm gonna call up Ms. Lexi to go through the pledge, the moment of silence, and our inspirational reading. And we do have, we've just started, the moment of silence is gonna be new this month. We're gonna be doing that, just like we do it in the schools. And just as Mr. Ingram said a few minutes ago, this is not to honor the passing of the Queen, it's just something that we're gonna start doing. Without further ado.
All right, yes, if I can have everybody stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy September. I hope the beginning of school has gone smoothly for everybody. One thing that's been bothering me, though, has been the temperature. It's been way too hot. Just waiting for it to drop and stay 60. A quote that I quite like about September is by Leah Mallett, and it states, "September was, um, sorry, September was a 30 days long goodbye to summer, to the season that left everybody both happy and weary of the warm, humid weather and its exhausting but thrilling adventures." I'm sure most of us agree, we need this humidity to go away, now. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lexi. Couldn't agree with you more there. Ms. McKay, do we have any additions and/or modifications to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And for recognitions, I think Ms. Purdy is gonna take that one for the Martin family.
Chair Helsel, school board members, audience, thank you for coming out tonight. We wanted to honor a particular donation that we received and will be installing at the Pecosin Middle School. This comes to us from a generous donation by the Martin family. It is a 1926 Kenaby Grand Piano. This is offered to us in memory of Thomas Martin's deceased wife, Naomi Fukusaka Martin, who was mother of our two students, Louis and Kai. Naomi was a student of music and shared her love of music with both her sons and Mr. Martin, and their hope is that children, young and old, will enjoy the music played on this piano for many years to come. And I can say with certainty that that will definitely be happening. So thank you very much for this generous donation. At this time, I'd like to invite the Martin family up to take a picture to commemorate this moment.
Thank you all. Okay, we're gonna move on to presentations and reports. The first one is the superintendent update by Mr. Tillot.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. My report will be brief, but it is about the opening of school this year. And I'm thankful to say that we started a few days early in preparation. Our teachers came back a couple of days early in preparation for this school year. And we were able to get in some very important training, and also some collaboration took place in those days prior to school. But we started out this year with something replacing the old convocation that used to happen in years past with what we call Spark Day. Spark Day is basically a high-energy, upbeat, professional learning day for our teachers. But what's unique about it is it is choice-based. The old one-size-fits-all in professional learning is not a best practice. So we started an experiment last year in January with a half-day, and we experimented with Spark Day. And our teachers gave us incredible feedback. They were able to choose from a variety of professional learning opportunities, most delivered by our own resident experts, our own teachers. And so this year, we expanded that for Spark Day, and we had 50 sessions, ranging from instructional sessions, community relations, individual growth sessions, well-being, and operations. So we kinda covered the gamut, and we got incredible feedback from our teachers. Here's a quote I like, I won't read it to you, but you can take a second to read. We got that kind of feedback, really, to a person. The only constructive feedback we got from the day from our staff was to do it a little earlier. It was right at the end of the professional learning, I mean, of the pre-service days. And our staff, as you well know, were anxious to be in their classrooms and setting up for the year. So we're gonna kick that back a few days earlier next year and continue to grow this. We had five food trucks, or four food trucks, in Chick-fil-A that served our staff their choice lunch. And again, it was a wonderful day and good feedback. We also had a DJ. Joe, no, lost his name there for a minute. Provided music and entertainment for the day, so it was a lot of fun. We had four open houses, they were well-attended. And we're up in enrollment this year. We're at over 2,100 kids. And if you'll remember, last year, we ended the school year right at 2050, 2055. So our enrollment's looking good. We hired over 60 new staff members. And of course, we toggled to virtual learning to give us an extra four days to get the middle school up and running, and that went very smoothly. We also have reinvigorated our technology in Spanish program at the elementary school. If you'll remember, those were healthy programs prior to COVID, and then we went a year in the elementary school without being able to hire a Spanish teacher. We partnered with a company called Participate Learning and have hired two Spanish teachers through that program, one that teaches at high school and one that has restarted this elementary Spanish program at the, at Pecosin Elementary School. So we're excited about that. We also had a really cool last-first day for our seniors. So it was kind of a cool way to start the year, their last-first day of school. And then, let's hear what our, a few of our kids have to say about it. You might recognize a couple of these folks. Maybe. So far, that's a big hit. And as you know, we'll be dedicating that building on the 28th at 5:30. And it's an exciting thing for the whole community. And then, of course, 6:30, we're welcoming the community to tour the halls and enjoy this beautiful space. Another thing that we're excited about, we're back in full speed ahead with extracurricular activities. High school sponsoring 43 clubs and organizations. Our middle school has eight, and six at the elementary school. And because we want this to be available to all kids, we're starting up in October, our activity bus runs again, so students who, who their parents may not be able to bring them back and forth, we'll bring them home. So we're excited about that. So we're looking forward to a great year. Any questions, comments, concerns about the start of school? I would say generally, it's been without the, with the exception of the normal whops in the road you see when you're kicking back up for the school year, it's been very smooth. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillot. And next up, we have Dr. Hill with our instruction update.
Chair Helsel, Superintendent Tillot, members of the board and guests. For my presentation tonight, I'm gonna be going over some of our SOL results with you. Compared to pre-pandemic levels, SOL scores are down for the entire Commonwealth in every subject, and gaps, both locally and statewide, are concerning. However, given the pandemic, they're definitely not unexpected. Across the Commonwealth, a variety of variables impacted, from virtual learning to record student and staff absences due to illness, isolation, and quarantine, especially during the Delta and Omicron surges, unprecedented social and emotional trauma, spikes in unemployment and homelessness, and other once-in-a-century disruptions deeply impacted student learning. Moreover, the data is abundantly clear that the pandemic disproportionately impacted low-income communities and communities of color. The good news is that all PCPS schools are fully accredited. And though we saw gaps in nearly every subject, we actually outperformed the state when we compare the SOL pass rate by subgroup. So for example, in math, our declines were less than the state for our students with disabilities, and our economically disadvantaged Hispanic and white students outperformed the state. And in reading, our students outperformed the state in five out of five subgroups. Our weakest subjects were science and writing, so we're going to be creating action plans to really focus on those areas this year. And students in subgroups who experience the most significant declines, they will be individually identified and monitored so as to receive the greatest support moving forward. The VDOE determined across the Commonwealth that schools that return to in-person learning as soon as possible outperform schools that remained virtual. We certainly saw that in Pecosin. Schools that remained primarily virtual also saw greater gaps in their SOL data in comparison to those that returned to in-person learning as soon as possible. Though the media attention has been focused on pre-versus-post pandemic SOL scores and resulting gaps, it's also important to look at growth data from the fall to the spring of last year, which, which we will be doing with you all in a subsequent meeting. The Virginia Growth Assessments give a teacher a baseline of a student's proficiency, and then they measure growth and progress throughout the year in reading and math for grades three to eight. The Virginia Growth Assessment is actually considered a pre-SOL, and the Fall VGA measured a student's knowledge of what they learned in a previous grade. This year, those assessments will be of content for their current grade level. These assessments are much shorter, they're about half the length of a normal SOL test, and they're not high-stakes tests. So they will not be used to assign a passing or failing score to a student, rather, these assessments are intended to be used by teachers and schools to inform instruction. So, we're going to go from the macro to the micro in looking at data, and what you see before you is PCPCS as a whole, division-wide data. If you look at the, let's see if this has a, if you look at that column all the way to the right, that's the current data, and then to the left of that, the 2020, 2021 data, just know that, you know, we recognize that year's score for what they are, because only approximately 50% of our students tested, so it's, we don't feel a true representation. And then, of course, for the 1920 school year, there's no data due to COVID-19 pandemic and school closures. So in looking at the 2122 data, you can see that PCPS outperformed the state quite significantly in many areas. And these are still preliminary data. We've been told by the VDOE that final data will come out on September 22nd. So we don't expect much to change, but it could certainly go up or down by a point or two. And I think that looks like a duplicate, no, I'm sorry, this is for the elementary school. So now, we'll go by schools. So for the elementary school, you can see that, that still in all areas for 2122, we outperformed the state quite significantly. For example, if you look at history, we really did quite well. Am I? There we go, sorry about that. So anyway, like, for example, if you look at history, we significantly outperformed the state, 90% as compared to 65, and in math and reading as well. So we're quite pleased with the results. And for the middle school, the same holds true. You can see in math that we did quite well, way outperformed the state in science and history as well. So kudos to our teachers who did a phenomenal job, you know, teaching in those conditions, so. And for the high school, again, you can see, especially in reading, that reading and math and, and science, our scores far exceed those of the state. So it, it was a nice, I wouldn't say surprise, but it was nice to see that our students, you know, did so well. And again, I think that's a testament to the dedication of our teachers and all the interventions that we had in place. Now, I wanna show you the subgroups for math, and this is where we start doing a little bit deeper dive. And once we have the final data back, we'll provide you with a packet, a monitoring document that delves down by school into the individual subgroups. But you can see here that the state actually, from previous years, saw a decline across the Commonwealth. And in fact, in PCPS, we actually saw as a division, an increase in scores. So our economically disadvantaged in math had a five-point increase. Our Hispanic students saw a 19-point increase. And although we did have a gap with our students with disabilities, our gap was only six points, whereas the state was 16 points. So I think that's phenomenal. And then, of course, our white students saw a three-point increase. So we were quite pleased with that. And later on, when we give you the monitoring document, we'll be using Excel spreadsheets and pivot tables to really take a more focused look down, drilling down into the data. So our next steps in addressing unfinished learning, it's going to be like peeling back the layers of an onion. So our school teams will take a deep dive into the data, and then they'll be identifying specific instructional supports and interventions that students require, both individually and in the aggregate, to get back on track to grade-level proficiency. And teams will look at subgroups as well as individual students that we can really pinpoint tutoring and other types of interventions. But this deep dive into the data is especially critical for many of our youngest learners who have spent more than one-third of their early elementary years without the benefit of 100% in-person instruction. The VDOE is going to be introducing individualized progress reports for our students in grades one to eight, and they'll be sent home to parents, and it will allow parents to see where their children are succeeding and where they specifically have fallen behind. And as soon as we get more information about this, I'll let you know that the department's going to pilot those progress reports in selected school divisions, and we haven't been told yet, you know, how they're going to determine that before they make them available for students and parents statewide. And as I stated earlier, we'll have finalized SOL data on the 22nd, and moving forward, we will provide you with a monitoring document by school and by grade level or department or course with action steps outlined. So we'll pull a team together in each school and come up with a plan collaboratively. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hill. And next, we have a finance update with Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chair Helsel and members of the school board. Tonight, I just have a few brief updates. The audit work has been ongoing. Over the summer, the auditors visited each of the schools and began their fieldwork. That process went very well. We're in the process of reviewing the draft reports for the school activity funds. The auditors are expected on-site this week and next week at the school board office, and I expect them to finish their report by the end of November, and then I'll be able to bring a report to you at the December board meeting. Finance staff are also finalizing work on the annual school finance report that has to be submitted to the state by the end of September. And I have a few charts to kinda walk you through, some enrollment trends. I kinda took a look at the last five years of enrollment, just to see kinda how we're coming out of the pandemic. And this is K-12 only, it doesn't include pre-K. So you can see that this is a snapshot, this is September, so our enrollment at any point in the year will fluctuate with people moving in and moving out of the division. What's important to me in the budget world is March 31st is our ADM, where we get our final funding from the state. So this just kinda shows you a snapshot of where we've gone from the 1819 school year to this school year. So we were at 2120, we're still kind of on a decline. We are tracking the neighborhood next-door legacy. We expect spring, we might see some students coming in from that. And then, there's another division, Quarter Creek, I think it's called, where 33 homes are getting closer to being ready. So we're watching those divisions to see when those kids might come. The next is just a few slides to break it down by each school. So you can see, primary enrollment has increased by 35 students since 1819. This is primarily kindergarten. We've seen in 1819 and 1920, they had 135, and then they're up to 157 this year. And you'll see that impacts elementary school, because those kindergarteners that had low enrollment, 135, are now third and fourth graders. So that's where you see some of the shift. So as they move through, if it's a small grade level, then it kinda floats through. So overall, elementary has decreased 18 students from 1819 to now. And this is middle school. They actually had the biggest decrease from 1819, where they've dropped 57 students between 1819 to now. And then, this is high school. They've only dropped 15 students since the 1819 school year. And then, I took a look, because I was curious about homeschool, to see, because we knew in the pandemic that kids had gone to homeschool, so I was trying to see where that change was. So it certainly went up to the 2021 school year, came down a little bit, but it's crept back up a little bit. So we're at 114 homeschool students right now. So, and that concludes my report.
I have a question for you. I think it was probably 2019, when the legacy first got proposed, that, was it the Weldon Cooper Center, am I recalling that right, that we had them study the enrollment? I wonder if it would be, I can't remember how much they thought we would get to with that community.
Yeah, we've, we've looked at that study, and those numbers have not really changed. I've worked closely with the city. As a matter of fact, I wrote out today and looked at the progress in three developments in the city. Legacy is, of course, the largest, and they still are estimating between 200 and 400 students that, that, that unit will generate, and it'll be phased in in three parts. The first phase may actually, we may see kids as early as this year in the first phase of that. It's pretty radical how fast that project is, is moving. Also, there's another project over off of Robert Bruce that's supposed to generate, I think, 32 homes, and one off of Darden Street that I think has 27 in the plan. So if you put all that together, we're using a number right around 400 kids as our high-end estimate, using the same formula that the, that the study generated. If we, if we amortize those numbers over the next two years, we can accommodate that. The crunch is gonna be the primary school. We've got plenty of room, we can really handle 100-plus kids in elementary, middle, and high, but the primary school is tight. So for another conversation down the road, we'll have to be putting our heads together to figure out what to do, primarily for the primary school, and also with those modular, do we keep them and have them readily available? We need two or three modulators at any of our sites at any given time, they're, you know, they're paid for. Something to be thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. And next, we have an operations update with Dr. Radcliffe.
Good evening, Madam Chair Helsel, Mr. Tillot, and board members. I'm gonna go through a few different topics tonight.
through a few different topics tonight, just to give you brief updates on all of them. First, the middle school. At this point, we anticipate our kitchen being up and running on October the 2nd. And we do feel like that that is a very good estimate and confident enough that we, we probably will even be ordering stock to begin that week prior so we can actually get it going. Currently, what we're doing is transporting food from the elementary school to the middle school so that the kids are fed, which is, is going surprisingly well. I don't know that we've really run into much of any roadblocks with that. The gym, at this point, I don't feel very comfortable in projecting a timeline as to when we're going to actually get in there. Construction, the construction companies are using it for prep. The furniture company is moving, are using it to put furniture together. They still have to do a few things such as some painting with the sprinkler system. I don't think that we're that far out, but a lot of these little miscellaneous things have to be wrapped up. And after that's done, we'll do a construction clean and go back and refinish the floors as well as we can there, which that amount of time won't, you're only talking about a week for that part. So, once we can kind of wrap up the miscellaneous things, we really can expeditiously move in that way. Blinds, we're still waiting on the company in which they were ordered from for them to come in. Once they do come in, the installation should be over a couple of nights or over a weekend. It should be a relatively quick process. And really, most all of the big work from the construction company is nearing completion. After that happens, they're really going to be working on punch lists, punch list types of things. And that will go on for a while until they get all of that done. In looking at the safety components that we've worked on so far this year, we've completed all of the DCJ, the Department of Criminal Justice System requirements, which basically that is the, the model in which schools in Virginia follow with, with the yearly requirements and components. The next thing that I will do in that is each school, we conducted an audit, a safety audit. We were involved, a couple of board members were involved, the police were involved. But basically, what we'll do is we'll take the findings from all of those, put it together into one big division survey. We're waiting right now still to hear if we received any money from the safety grant that we applied for through the state. What we hope is that we do get some funding from that safety, safety grant money and we can use some carryover money from last year so we can move forward with starting to implement some of the things that we want to do regarding safety in the future. Transportation has, has gone really well this year. We currently have a full staff of bus drivers. I still need substitute drivers, but we do have a full staff of regular drivers. Again, we, there have been very, very few problems as the year went going. I think even the primary school, the, the buses got out of there by four o'clock, I think, within the first week of school, which is pretty amazing. Usually, they don't get there that quick. So they're all doing a really good job with that. Right now, we're implementing, implementing an updated software program for transportation that's going to give us a lot more options. So far, the components of people being able to view routes within, whether it be our principals, our receptionist, bookkeeper, secretaries to help out on that end has been implemented. We actually pushed out today the new field trip system that where teachers and athletics will put in their field trips electronically. So everything will flow a little bit better. The next step in the upgrade is a program that we actually have purchased tablets for that will go on buses and it will visibly show the routes that the drivers are taking. So they don't have to try to read a sheet of paper while they're driving if it's, if it's someone else driving a route. And it's got a few pretty neat components that, that you can touch the stop and it actually gives you a list. And if we have the picture in Power School, the picture of the student who should be getting on or getting off of the stop. So it really can help out a little bit with security there as well. We, right now, we've actually moved our bus lot from the police station and all of our buses are now parked in the gravel lots by the elementary school where the trailers are. And we have created a, basically a transportation office, kind of a home, a hub that the, the drivers can go, whatever the reason may be, to work out of. And that, that actually has worked out really well. And I know that that's one thing that the, the police chief has asked us and we've been asked for years, if, if we can get buses out of their area, it would be really nice. So we were able to accomplish that last year. And again, that's worked out pretty well. The last thing I want to talk about is air quality. So when you look at air quality, it, it, it isn't quite as cut and dry as one may think. There aren't any state or federal, federal regulations for non-hazardous or hazardous spore counts or concentrations. Okay? When you're looking at the concentration of spore counts, what you're doing is you're comparing the outside count to the inside count. So it could change each day. If you, if you were doing air quality testing every day, it could be a moving target that you hit and the differences that you see from what's outside as compared to what's inside could change. So you can only do this testing when you have had two consecutive days at a minimum of dry weather with no rain. What happens when it rains, all of the, the spores get wet and they wash away and, and basically scatter in different directions. And what it does is it significantly changes the distribution of the spores that you get when you're measuring the outside count. Okay? So air quality at the primary school. We, we conducted some air quality testing this summer at the primary school. When that came back, three rooms had an elevated score count when the, when the concentrations were compared to the outside concentration. The lab, the lab that performed the testing told us that the airborne concentrations in those three rooms were really not overly concerning to them. They told us that there, there was nothing that was high enough that would cause any kind of significant health effects in the general population. The, the, a couple of other interesting things that they told us was that the spore concentrations that were found inside were typical of going out, a person going outside on a fall, a spring or a summer day. And finally, what they told us is basically, you could tell from where the counts were that the source of the higher counts was because of moisture. So essentially, to completely cure that, you're looking at completely remediating, curing any kind of moisture that's happening within the building. Within the report that the laboratory gave us, they also gave the recommendations in order to remediate. While the spore counts were higher than what they were outside, not dangerously higher, we still want to try to remediate those areas to, to get rid of most, all that we can. So basically, all of the surfaces that there was anything visible were either completely taken out. If it was a sheet rock area, for example, the sheet rock was taken out and replaced. If it were an area that was blocked, it would have been cleaned good, let dry, and then spore aside was treated to the area. The, the, the maintenance guys have looked very hard and diligently trying to find any areas of moisture, any areas of standing water, trying to make sure to get rid of all of that. So, again, so you can make sure there is not any moisture for spores to, to attach to and to, to grow. We, we've, the spore side, I mentioned that we had applied it to areas where we may have seen areas that could not be taken out, but we've also treated the entire building multiple times. So we didn't really feel like it was appropriate just to hit the three rooms that flagged. We felt it was more appropriate to hit everything in the school as we went around. The last thing that we did along the lines of remediation, we also brought in a restoration company because we wanted to make sure that what we were doing was correct and what we were doing was the right, you know, doing it in the right way and the right thing. It was really nice when, what the information we got from him was basically, everything that we were doing is everything that they would do if they came in. So following those recommendations and how we approached them, essentially, that company that came in let us know, yes, you're doing the right thing and you're following the procedures that you need to follow. We did, since we had done the, the remediation, we actually did more testing this past week. It was this past Thursday. It would have been the week prior, but again, the weather got us. So, once we got to the point that we had dry days, we were able to do that. We do anticipate having a result sometime this week. We don't have them yet. You know, and the other thing that we'll do is we're going to continue to monitor this. We're going to continue to make sure and use the spore aside. The, the cleaning in the buildings right now is substantially different than we've gotten in many years. So I'm, I'm very comfortable saying, yes, the buildings are being cleaned as well as they can at this point. So now, we just have to make sure that we're doing some of those proactive measures to make sure that we don't have any problems in the future. May I ask there any questions if you have them?
I have one, Mr. Ratliff.
Yes.
So what if a student has allergies to a specific mold type of thing? Do y'all have a plan for those kids?
Let me address that. We, we have students who have every known allergy in the world.
No, and there's more now than there used to be.
Yeah. It's, you know, schools have always historically had the challenge of making sure we protect everyone's health needs. So that goes from one extreme to the other. And so what we have in place is that any student who has health needs, we address through our nursing program and the medical experts that those families use. They give us a note that the child needs some particular accommodation, we do that. So for example, if this kid had severe allergies and a parent sent us a, a medical note that that allergy needed to be in a particular area that was less sensitive to spores, we would change that child's schedule and move them to another classroom where the spore count is lower. That's just one example. We also are very accommodating when it comes to absences. We have found that students who have extreme allergies often miss a lot of school. That's not uncommon. And they do it seasonally. A lot of times, at certain times of the year, they miss more school. And we're very user-friendly when it comes to that. We make sure the kid gets, gets all the support that they need to stay caught up with their work. So, good question, but we, we try everything we can to accommodate students with their health needs, whether it's allergies or, or any other kind of, of health condition. We've been very sensitive to the, the primary school because we did know there were three classrooms in that building that although not dangerous by any account, if someone was super sensitive to, with allergies, we would relocate those students or offer that to, to those families.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Dr. Ratliff. Ms. McKay, do we have any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And Mr. Freeman is going to walk us through the consent agenda, please.
For the consent agenda tonight, we have the approval of financial reports, authorization to change appropriation to accept and expend funds in accordance with an attached request, approval of personnel action, and approval of minutes for August regular meeting and work session.
Thank you. Would anybody like to?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Dr. Goodeal.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Everett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Aye.
Chair Helsel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next is other matters for consideration. The first is the consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy.
Just a quick update. That is of course something that we do annually and as recommended by our attorneys. And you guys had the opportunity to preview that, those changes in striking bold in the last meeting. So we're asking for approval tonight with second reading.
Any questions or comments? To approve the second reading changes?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of changes to policy.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. McKay, would you please?
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Dr. Goodeal.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Everett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Aye.
Chair Helsel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of approval for, of proclamations for National School Lunch Week and Bullying Prevention Month. And I'm going to have Mr. Freeman walk us through the National School Lunch Week proclamation.
The proclamation for National School Lunch Week, October 10th through 14th, 2022. Whereas over 123 million student lunches were served in Virginia public schools, and whereas studies have shown that access to nutritious programs such as the National School Lunch Program and National School Breakfast Program helps to create a strong learning environment for children and helps to improve children's concentration in the classroom, and whereas school lunches are healthier than ever, meet nutritional guidelines are served in age-appropriate portion sizes, provide the right balance of protein, dairy, whole grains, fruits and vegetables, and whereas research has shown that students who eat school meals perform best academically, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and wellbeing of our nation's children and has served our nation for over 60 years through advanced practices in nutrition education. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 20th day of September in the year 2022 by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that the week of October 10th through 14th, 2022 be hereby celebrated as National, National School Lunch Week in all of Pecosin public schools.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And Mr. Ingram, if you will read the Bullying Prevention Month.
Proclamation, Bullying Prevention Month, October 2022. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim. And whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in many places on and off school grounds, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas it is important for Pecosin parents, students, teachers and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. And now therefore be it proclaimed on this 20th day of September in the year 2022 by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, that the month of October 2022 is Bullying Prevention Month with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in Pecosin schools and classrooms during that time.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Does anybody have any comments about those proclamations? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve both proclamations?
Motion to approve the proclamation for National School Lunch Week and Bullying Prevention.
Ms. McKay, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram.
Aye.
Dr. Goodeal.
Aye.
Mr. Childress.
Aye.
Ms. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Everett.
Aye.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Aye.
Chair Helsel.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And next, we'll move on to communications and/or other matters by the school board and superintendent. And I'm going to start with Mr. Tillot. Did you have anything else?
Just one brief comment. I just want to issue another great big thank you to our entire staff for, you know, I, I tell everybody, we're small but mighty. And this group of educators from every department, every nook and cranny of the City of Pecosin has, has rallied to, to make this school year a, a, a big success and get off to a great start. So I just want to thank everybody. It's been a lot of hard work over the summer preparing and it just, it, it, we can't say it enough. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all the hard work from our diligent staff. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Tillot. And next is Ms. Lexi.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Just like last time, I'm going to start with the primary school's report. PPS has jumped into the school year with 1,000-plus feet. We have all been in learning classroom and school-wide expectations for our behavior, sharing about ourselves and our hopes and dreams, learning new vocabulary and reading and listening to some great books. We are becoming good citizens in the cafeteria and on the bus. We have been practicing fire and lockdown drills so that we know how to be safe in case of an emergency. We have some exciting events ahead in October with being our first in-person fall book fair. Families should be seeing flyers coming home with information about when it will be held, which is the week of October 3rd through 7th, and a reminder to save the date for a family night, which will be held Thursday, October 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. More information in a flyer from the video book fair vendor will come home, excuse me, in the next couple of weeks as well. We want to celebrate the training that many of our staffs have finished, the LETRS, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It is a year-long professional training. training program opportunity for staff to receive certification and bring knowledge regarding the science of reading to their everyday teaching. We are proud to say that nine current teachers have been certified in the last two years, and we are adding six more this year. Thank you to all of our parents for your patience and understanding as we continue to work on our arrival and dismissal processes. We are getting faster each day. And a huge thanks to our PTO members for their warm welcome and constant support of families and staff in the building. Next, onto the elementary school. The first two weeks of school at PES have been full of fun and getting to know new classmates and beginnings to learn new things in new grade levels. PES has begun a new school year learning about the three Rs of the school's values are built on. Respect, responsibility, and resourcefulness are emphasized in all areas of the school and throughout the day. Administrators have begun to sign positive office referrals sent to the office by teachers for students who are demonstrating any of the three Rs. The students also get to sign the Golden Book, which of all of other students' names have received this award. It's very exciting for any student who can take a positive office referral home to celebrate this success. Third graders are busy creating their Mew Museums, which involves students writing and creating display about things that highlight what each student feels and is special about themselves. One day soon, all students will display their Mew Museums for others to see. Fourth graders are beginning to learn about Virginia Studies and are planning a field trip to Yorktown and Jamestown. Fifth graders have been very excited about participating in the STEM program activities, and teachers have been creating an exciting year of science activities to teach fifth-grade science SOLs. PES has added a STEM lab this year where all the grade-level classes can get to experience learning and conducting experiments in a lab. PES is excited to be offering Spanish to all students. Mr. Ramirez from Columbia has joined the PES staff and has enthusiastically been immersed into the school life of PES. Students saying hola and cómo está echoes throughout the halls with much laughter and excitement is heard coming from the Spanish classroom with Mr. Ramirez is teaching Spanish. Master gardener Susan Northcutt is once again distributing caterpillars and chrysalises to classrooms, which are interested in having a monarch butterfly emerge and then being able to release it. PES is finishing up a growth assessment in reading and math, along with other beginning-of-the-year assessments. As for a theme of this school year states, PES is growing on greatness in all of our wonderful students. Now on to the middle school. Pecosin Middle School is extremely excited to be back in our building. Open house on September 9th was widely attended, and it was so nice to see families checking out our new school. We began in-person learning on Monday, September 12th, and our students are doing a great job navigating the building as they transition classes and opening lockers. This was new for all three grades at PMS this year. A huge kudos extended to our outstanding food service providers as they were preparing breakfast and lunch each day at PES and then delivering them to PMS and setting up kiosks in the hallways to serve the food. This ladies are doing an outstanding job with such positive attitudes. Pecosin Middle School has picture date tomorrow, Wednesday, September 21st. We are looking forward to hosting the community open house on Wednesday, September 28th, from 6:30 to 7:30. We encourage members of our community to attend this event if they are able to, to see the new vastly improved middle school. It truly is amazing, and we hope to see you there. I'll say one thing, I am very excited to see the new school. Now for the high school. Our fall extracurricular activities have been very successful so far, with all sports teams, marching band, drama productions, and clubs earning wins and performing at high levels. We encourage student participation in extracurricular activities. Just a few instructional spotlights to share some highlighting of the amazing students and staff are. The PHS Veterans Project has started again with Ms. Morrison and students hosting an event today for our veterans. Our new advanced survey biology course is using raised beds to plant a winter garden. Those crops will be utilized into the intra-culinary arts class soon. Ms. Yarborough took her students to visit the community master gardeners, helped guide the coursework. All teachers have started assessing student knowledge and are making appropriate adjustments to the lessons based on the data. We have also conducted student expectation meetings and will continue these presentations throughout the week. Last but not least, our Student Council Association is now starting the process of planning our homecoming event, which will take place on October 7th and 8th. More information regarding all the things at Pecosin High School, please check out the weekly newsletter, The Islander Times, and feel free to reach out to get us connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. That was a great report out. Mr. Ingram?
Sure. Just want to thank all the teachers and staff for a great opening to a new school year, and a special thanks to all the middle school teachers and staff for being able to get everything up and running so that we could minimize the virtual learning for the students so they could be in person. PF, Pecosin Education Foundation, they're having a 5K run October 29th, starting at 8:00 a.m., and registration that day is 7:00 a.m. And if you want to preregister, October 19th through October the 26th.
Thank you. Dr. Goodell?
Just a echo of those thoughts. I want to say thank you for the middle school opening process. It was kind of seamless. The online learning was good enough to get them excited for a few days, to kind of get to see what was in their classroom. So there's still ways to go with the gym and all that stuff like that, but the students and parents are really appreciative of all the efforts everyone made to get them in there, get them in the house before, you know, while school starts.
Thank you. Mr. Childress?
I'd like to thank all the teachers, the employees, the school bus drivers, the superintendent, the people that helped get this school year going. Seeing the kids get off the bus excited after that first and second day, running home, telling everybody about how fun it was to get back in the class and seeing excitement on their face was just awesome. So you guys do a great job at everything y'all do, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Rattler and his team, the school, the middle school, you know, the grade in the middle school, and I don't think they get quite enough credit, but it was really great experience. I had all day at open house. By the end of the day, I was giving the tours. But it was great to see the kids be excited in the space. You know, middle school's a tough time for kids, and I think, you know, having a new place, newish place anyway, was a cool experience for them. So kudos to you and your team, though, because we wouldn't be there without you. And to the construction company, too, for finishing early, because that is unheard of. So shout out to you guys for that. I would say shout out to the teachers and everybody. I think we're all happy to be back in school and appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Everett?
I would like to thank the Martin family.
The course teacher will thank you also. I'd like to thank Zach Baker, the new assistant athletic director. He is on the job. Every time I turn around and I'm on Facebook, there is a schedule, commendation. He is on the ball. I want to thank, and I don't even know how to express myself with this, the teachers, the administration, paras, staff, all of you guys. We see you, we love you, and we support you. And we thank you for everything you do. You are the reason Pecosin is as big and as happy as it is. People bring their children here because of you, not because of us. We don't do it. You guys do it when you're in the classroom, when you're in your office, even the nurses. I mean, I've worked in those buildings. I know what it takes. So you guys, you deserve a rock star's salary, and you don't get it. We try. We try. And I have looked over the budget myself. I've tried, but I want you principals to let them know, your teachers, that we support them. We are behind them, and they are heard. So I just really need to get that out there, because sitting on this side of the desk is totally different than walking the halls of that school and working my butt off. And that's what you guys do. It doesn't stop at 2:00, 3:00, or 4:00 o'clock. You take that stuff home, you worry about everyone's children. They're your children, and I understand that. And I think that needs to be recognized in every single school system, this entire district. Please tell your teachers, your paras, whoever's in the school, they are so appreciated, because without them, there is nothing in this city. Honestly, I want to make that very, very clear. Did I do that? Okay. So Brandon, my next one is for you. Thank you for taking me for my tour. I honestly do not know how you put up with all of that stuff, okay? I would have started twitching. I know there were headaches, and I apologize for them. I'm sure, I am so sure, you didn't tell me everything, okay? But you, too, you have not gone unseen. Your work was amazing, okay? My next one is to the IT department. And I don't know how many's in there now, but I do know one. And his name is Josh Montel, though. And let me tell you something. Josh and I have not always gotten along, okay? We haven't. We've seen our differences. Doesn't mean I don't love him. That doesn't mean that. But let me tell you what, that man has done something that I don't think, I've worked at NASA for many years, guys, I don't think the NASA engineers could have done with this man has done, getting the middle school straight. And Melissa, when you see him, please let him know that I'm sure everybody on this board appreciates the amount of time. It seems to me that he's worked 24/7. I could be wrong. And this man has four children. So there again, Superman. Who does that? The city of Pecosin schools, that's who does it. So Melissa, tell him I don't hate him, okay?
He's not going to fall off a flat chair.
That we see that, though. I think it's important for him to know that we see his work, and it is phenomenal. It is phenomenal, and we so appreciate it. And I know it's going to be fluid. I understand that. He can't do every room or whatever, you know. Some things are going to be running late. We get it, okay? But he's doing very best that he can. And I personally thank him for that. I'm not finished.
I have a fourth, darling.
Thank you. I told you I'm ready for this one, right?
It was supposed to be a short meeting.
No, not at all.
Behind her.
Okay, good. Thank you. So I saw where we had hired a new SRO, Troy Curry, and I know Troy personally, and it was such a good pick. He is going to be great with those children. So if he's watching, Troy, congratulations. I think that, no, Becky Morrison, another one. I don't know who the high school principal is. You are. You've got to let this girl know, and you probably already have. She has done something that is like so unique. But again, Pecosin is unique. But I think she needs all the kudos in the whole wide world for what she puts off. And I want, just tell her sissy said she's great, but she's still a history geek. Tell her I said that. And that's about it. Thank you so much.
I feel like I want to clap for, amen to all of that. Thank you. Miss that right. Mr. Freeman, how are you gonna, it's all you.
I need to sit over there.
Ditto.
But now, just want to thank the Martin family for the very generous donation, and just all the teachers and everybody for back to school. Just know, we appreciate all the hard-working effort that you guys do. And I'd always said that we greatly appreciate everything all the time.
Absolutely. Thank you. And ditto to everything that Ms. Everett said, is what I'm going to say. Other than that, I have just a couple of other little comments. Melissa, at the middle school, you know, your teachers and your staff there have had to not just deal with the sixth graders' learning lockers. You've had to learn with the whole entire school. I can tell you, my daughter alone, so thank you, because, thank you all. So it's wonderful. And the only other thing I'm going to say is remember tomorrow is a half-day for students, and then it's a teacher workday. So again, we try to build more into those, because that's what y'all are asking for. And again, I think every single one of us has said, we appreciate all of our staff so much. So thank you all. Other than that, Ms. McKay, do we have any material for board review?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn us for the evening, and we're going to go into a work session and then a close session. Thank you all.